Head of time.
Church, if you would give our invocation tonight, so if you would, please bow your heads.
All right. Lord, as I stand here among our city leaders, Lord, I just ask for your wisdom on them. Father, Proverbs three, five, and six comes to my heart, says to trust in you with all of our heart and not to lean on our understanding, but to acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you will direct our paths. So, Father, I ask for each one here, including myself, to let your word be our plumb line that judges how we make decisions, Lord, how we impact our town, how we impact our families, Lord. I ask that you would give each one here the wisdom they need, Lord, the clarity, the discernment, to be able to make the decisions, but to use your word as the guide, Lord, not to use the social norms, not to use anything else that can impact or influence, Lord, but rather to just trust in you. Lord, bless them. I thank you for all that they do for our city and the wonderful job that they're doing, and I ask that you would just minister to each one, Lord, to their families, and to just bless them in all that they do, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate you coming in. Welcome, everybody. Glad to call this meeting in order of the October eighth, two thousand twenty-four Monroe City Council. Let the record reflect, hey, Mr. Boyce, thank you for coming. I let the record reflect that all members of council are present. Tonight, before we do approval of the agenda, we need to scratch the Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. We're going to move that to one of the two following months, and we do have another amendment. Logan, would you like to explain that?
Yes, sir. So, we had a little bit of a snafu on the agenda here. Need to amend the agenda to remove the public hearing of the rezone for eleven twenty-five North Broad Street and change that public hearing to old business and new business, item two A, rezone eleven twenty-five North Broad Street will be removed.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Logan about that? I'll need a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended, please.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the consent agenda, please. We have the council minutes from August and September, the executive session minutes from September, council minutes from the fourteenth, planning commission, historic preservation, downtown development, downtown development, and convention and visitors' bureau from July and August. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to public presentations, I have a couple tonight. Not sure if I can read as quickly as Paul does, but I'm going to give it a shot. First proclamation is Walk to a Park Day. Whereas the city of Monroe believes that everyone deserves equitable access to green spaces and seeks to ensure all residents have safe and nearby access to parks, whereas high-quality and accessible parks are anchors of equitable, economically thriving, safe, and vibrant American cities and have the power to transform communities, and whereas Trust for Public Land is a national nonprofit that works to protect land and create parks for people, and to work with cities and communities to accelerate action to address the park equity divide, and whereas the ten-minute walk program is a national effort by Trust for Public Land that supports cities in their work to reduce the park equity divide and make it possible for all people in the United States to access quality parks and green spaces within ten-minute walk of their homes, and whereas according to the Trust for Public Land research, parks serving a majority of people of color are, on average, half as large and serve nearly seventy-five, I'm sorry, nearly five times more people as parks that serve a majority white population, and parks serving primarily low-income households are on average four times smaller than parks that serve a majority of high-income households. And whereas this park equity divide is in part the result of decades of inequitable planning, practice in policy decisions, and where complex social and historical contexts also contribute to many aspects of this park equity divide, and whereas the city of Monroe residents currently living within a ten-minute walk of home, according to Trust for Public Land's data, Monroe seeks to improve access to parks to increase opportunities for all residents to create, play, educate, and enjoy themselves through a variety of programs, activities, and events, and therefore, I, John S. Howard, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Monroe, do hereby proclaim October tenth, two thousand twenty-four, National Walk to a Park Day, and encourage the goals of the ten-minute walk program. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Monroe to be affixed this day of October, two thousand twenty-four. John Stewart Howard. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Dickinson, as he has been the leader of our park connectivity projects.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Giles, would you mind stepping forward, please? Pierce? Many of you may know Pierce from the community. Council may more recognize him from coming in and having us put up that guardrail on Gratus Road for the safety of the residents out there. I'm going to say Gratus Road, but it might be Merribel. Not really sure where it changes names. I want to tell you how much we appreciate you. We're going to have some questions for you in just a second. I'm going to need you to do a little song. So, anyway, whereas the city of Monroe recognizes individuals whose dedication to service and commitment to their community set an inspiring example for all, and whereas Pierce Giles has demonstrated exemplary citizenship through his unwavering commitment to service, leadership, and community involvement, and whereas as a proud member of the Tuscan Lodge number thirty-eight, Pierce has embodied the principles of brotherhood, charity, and integrity, contributing significantly to the well-being of our community, and whereas Pierce's efforts in supporting local initiatives, volunteering for charitable causes, and fostering a spirit of cooperation reflect the highest ideals of civic responsibility, and whereas his positive impact on the lives of those around him serves as a testament to the power of individual action in creating a vibrant, supportive community, and whereas we honor Pierce Giles for his dedication, leadership, and exemplary service to the citizens of Monroe. Therefore, I, John S. Howard, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Monroe, Georgia, do hereby proclaim October eighth, two thousand twenty-four, as Pierce Giles' day. In our city, I encourage all residents to celebrate his contributions and strive to emulate his spirit of service and commitment to our community. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Monroe to be affixed this eighth day of October, two thousand twenty-four. John S. Howard. Pierce, you're impressive. I appreciate what you've done for our community. I appreciate your work at the Tuscan Lodge. I appreciate the food bank and just the love that you share with our community. Would you like to say anything?
Yes. First of all, giving honor to God. He is the head of my house, head of my life. First of all, I could not do it without the help of... I have some people here. Would you stand, please? This is my representative, my wife. She's my co-pilot. Every time I go to pick up, she's in the truck with me. We leave at eight o'clock on Thursday, on Tuesday mornings. I could not do this without the help of them. My church, Mount Enoch Baptist Church, Reverend Glenn Hendrix, he's one of the pastors, associate pastors there. I have a church member here that's headed with Locke. I could not do all of this without them. Also, we are in need of help. We could use food donations. We could use financial help. There are a lot of things that we have going on over there. I am currently taking classes to try to help better the citizens here. Right now, I'm taking classes so that I can try and help people in the community if they need food stamps. They don't have to go to D-Fat. They can go through me to get food stamps, help get food stamps. We need help with food donations. If I can get some of the grocery stores around here on board, I've gotten in with Publix. If I can get some donations, if we could come up with a truck that would help us so that we wouldn't have to rent trucks all the time, financial help. There's a lot of things going on at Tuscan that we could deal with. I appreciate the honor. I'm overwhelmed because I never thought that I would be standing in front of you all.
I'm certainly good to you, sir.
I would like to say thank you. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for what you've done for Monroe. I appreciate you.
My health is good. For y'all who didn't know, I went to a Bible conference. I took twenty-four hours of reading.
That is excellent. Thank you, Pierce. And to those of you who came to support him, I really appreciate your being here, number one, and number two, you don't have to stay. This is how the sausage gets made. It's not really that good-looking, so if y'all feel like getting up and going, that's fine. If you want to watch, we'll do what we can. Moving to public comments, I don't think we had any tonight, did we, Chris? Okay. Next, we'll move to business items, city administrator update, please, Logan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, and I've asked everyone to kind of be brief because we have a lot on the agenda tonight. I'll just bring up one thing. Want to celebrate that we got the award for plan first designation with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. It's our first time receiving that. This year, they only give that distinction to six cities, Acworth, Alma, Augusta, Camilla, Monroe, and Warner Robbins. So, it's a big deal in the local government sector. It means we can apply for more grants, we can be awarded more points for different grant opportunities, receive things at lower interest rates, so on and so forth. So, just wanted to note that, and that's really due to all of your dedication to sticking with our comprehensive plan and CDBGs, and just, you know, we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's with everything we do. So, that was recognized with DCA. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Ms.
That's something from DCA.
Something.
It is. I was at Northeast Georgia Regional Council last week, and when Beth announced that, there were a whole lot of oohs and ahs about, there goes Monroe again. So, thank you. Are there any questions for Logan before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Probst. Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir, thank you. My couple of things are concert season has come to an end at the Green. Our first year, we had a little over fifteen thousand people attend throughout concerts. That was the brief grand opening that we had, too, and then we had rain at the last concert, which kind of lowered numbers a little bit. But looking forward to next year, different things that we have coming up during the holiday season, there will be a theater on the Green produced by On Stage. Should be fun, be something different. We've got several choirs, potential orchestra coming. I think I've mentioned that before. And then the big one this coming Saturday, Fall Fest, that's usually our biggest event of the year as far as attendance. We've got great weather. Last year, we had a little over twenty-two thousand that, you know, cell phone data actually picks up until it just maxes out, and it says, hey, you've got twenty-two, and that's it. And then after that, I ask that any and everybody follow social media because we'll have a busy holiday schedule, starting with Light Up the Night on November seventh, and then it's pretty much every Thursday night, all the way up until the Christmas parade, and then all the way to Christmas. So, we always look forward to that. And then the only other thing that I wanted to hit is I wanted to thank all of our departments that came together last Thursday night, about midnight, I think, when everybody got back in here, prepared for the worst with the hurricane coming through, and I guess the misfortune of some was our fortune because we got extremely lucky that we didn't have what Augusta had hit them. But for that matter, I mean, you know, we're Monroe, and I'm proud that we avoided that. But I know streets, central services, parks, grounds, all of utilities, public safety, we were all here ready to put it back together again, and we certainly would have, but we dodged a huge bullet. But just a big thanks to all the directors, all of our staff, all of our employees who went home and left their families and came back for Monroe. So, that's it, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, Chris. Moving to department reports, Mr. Croy.
Thank you, Mayor. So, hopefully, everybody's a little bit more comfortable tonight. I apologize for last month when it was warm in here, but we did get the chillers patched, and we're pulling them through this month, so hopefully, we can keep them up. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to go by the visitor's center and see the wonderful job that our contractor's done there. It's looking really nice. We, just about complete, it's fully painted, they're working on some metal trim flashing around the building, and a few more things. Hopefully, next month, that will be absolutely brought to a completion. And our parks, in Matthews Park on Thursday, when you walk to a park, bring a fishing pole with you. If you'll see, we finally were able to stock Matthews Park, the lake, with some catfish. We were able to stock it with about four hundred pounds of catfish. So, you'll see in my report there, some of the fish that we put in there. Childers Park, toward the end of the month, as Bailey said, we're going to be getting ready for the night of lights, so they're going to, our central services and Jeremiah's teams will start putting up all those lights displays. Just bear with us for those few weeks while they're all in there working and got trucks and equipment and trailers everywhere. We'll try to get that up as quickly as possible, and that's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Croy. Are there any questions? Appreciate it, man. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to mention that the Form-Based Code public comment period is now over, and we've received actually very little feedback from the community on the Form-Based Code, and it is advertised for its first recommendation hearing by the Planning Commission next Tuesday night, and you will see the Form-Based Code and some other amendments to the zoning ordinance in November. That's your first reading for that. That's all that I had. If there's anything else?
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Mr. Calendar? Moving to Mr. Wilson, Economic Development.
I'm going to join the brief train. Good evening. Real quick, got three updates. Main one, or big one, is the downtown hotel feasibility study. I don't get into the details of that, but there's a lot of reading in the agenda. If you guys want to pull the packet, there's a lot of great data in there. But the general, the overall consensus there with them was that it's a positive, one positive message as far as us trying to move forward with securing a hotel for downtown. So, the next step to that is RFP. We're currently working on that. The hope right now, I think, and we're still on track with it, is to get that done and up, posted by November first. So, we're well ahead of schedule. We were thinking we'd get the report maybe late October, going into November, and then maybe start that in December. So, I think we're doing good on that. Social media didn't have a whole lot of growth last month, but also didn't have a lot to post last month, so that's really kind of it. That's what drives it. When we put those out there, we get a lot of extra, you know, leads and feedback from those. In fact, I put a couple up there right before we left for the weekend, and we've already got more additions to that than we got the whole month, the last month. So, that's just two days. So, we'll have more of those to go up, I think, you know, this month, and increase that growth a little bit. City and downtown business activity, so we had nine business license additions, couple of notable ones there in the DDA where the Highland Vine, which is the wine shop that's going in at the old Broad Street Boots, and then Active Souls Running Company, which is going in down where Reboot was, and they've already vacated that building, they've already made substantial progress in gutting that. If you'd been in it when they were in there, and you go look at it now, it's a big difference. So, at any rate, that, I don't have an opening date for that yet, but that's all moving forward pretty good. And then we had seven business license deletions. One of those was in the DDA, and that was the McGriff Insurance Services. So, that's all I've got. Anybody have any questions? I'm open to those now.
Thank you. Any questions, Brian?
Thank you, sir.
You going to take, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, I will.
Finance, Mr. Probst?
So, this is for August ending. Right now, we're kind of in the lull where we're a little bit below budget on the general fund side, about forty-nine percent, and expenses are running about seventy percent of budget. But as you know, the property taxes will start to come in here in the next month, and the, excuse me, the insurance premium tax that we collect will start coming in next week. So, that'll help float our general fund budget. Utilities are both, they're running over on revenues, which is good, and expenses are up a little bit, trending in the same direction, so we're positive there. Solid waste fund, our overall revenues are a little below budget, and our expenses are a little bit more, so we're trying to work on rebalancing that as well. There's a little bit of a timing issue as well with some of the payments to the landfill. And we are currently working on the 2025 budget with all the department directors, and we'll be setting up meetings later this month and into November with you all. That comes up quick. And currently, finance is working on about five different projects, including the MyCivic app, which will hopefully be launching, relaunching in short order. Chris is heading that up a lot with Beth. So, that is the social interaction. If you remember, several years ago, we kind of had the three-one-one app, something to that effect, and that has given you more citizen engagement, interaction.
Thank you, Logan. Any questions for Mr. Probst? About Mrs. Thompson's report? Let's go to Chief Dykes, please. Fire?
Thank you, Mayor. The August incident data is in your packet. The highlighted, I'd like to add, is that that was the busiest August that we've had in the past five-year span, so call volume seems to be increasing with increase in population, which is to be predicted. Right now, we are in the midst of fire prevention week, and this year's theme is smoke alarms, make them work for you. So, real quickly, I'd like to do a little PSA on that. So, install smoke alarms in each of your bedrooms, outside all living units, and such as your hallways, and on each floor of your home. Test them once a month and make sure to replace them at their ten-year expiration. And lastly, we are in the midst of hosting our second hazmat tech class at GUTA. We talked about this earlier this year. Today was cool because Gwinnett County sent their hazmat team out to do some hands-on instruction with the students in that class, and just so you're aware of what, how many folks that's reaching, that class is comprised of students from Monroe Fire, Walton Fire, Loganville Fire, Social Circle, Covington, and Newton Counties, and we are hosting them out at GUTA. And that class should conclude this Friday, and so another great use of that facility. And that is what I have in brevity today. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Chief Dykes? Thank you. Moving forward, Chief Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple announcements here I want to make. This coming Friday, October eleventh, is actually the forty-seventh year of the passing of Lieutenant Michael Edgerton. You know, every year, we do the laying of the reef on his grave just to recognize his honor. He's the only officer that was killed in the line of duty here for our department, so we want to recognize that. October fifteenth, seventeen, which is next week, we'll be conducting active shooter training at Monroe High School. We encourage the schools in our jurisdiction to come out and participate with that. October nineteenth is going to be our first ever five K and ten K with the police department. It's named the SWAT trot. It starts at eight-thirty that morning. Registration is thirty-five dollars, and all proceeds are going to go towards our shop with a cop that we do every year annually. And our crime stats are still looking good. I tell you the numbers every year, I mean, every month, crimes against persons are down thirty-two percent, crimes against property are down forty-four percent, and crimes against society is fifty-four percent. And lastly, this afternoon, the Barre County Board of Commissioners came by and gave us a proclamation, and I brought it with me tonight. This is in honor of our officers that participated in the Appalachia High School active shooter event, and they just recognized us for contributions to that, and I just wanted to show the council. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you should have any.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the chief? I really think that's awesome.
It is very awesome.
The way you all jumped in and helped in so many surrounding departments was really, really nice to see.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Danny Smith, solid waste.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of things. We collected over eighty-two mattresses in August, but we did bill out over one-hundred-and-twenty-one. Some of that carried over from July, a little over eighteen hundred dollars. And the only other thing I have is just want to encourage the customers to take advantage of our curbside glass collection program. It's a double benefit. It's a revenue source, and it also reduces our disposal cost, and so we want to try to bump up that volume and take advantage of that service and no charge as part of your service. And if anybody want to participate, just call seven-seven-oh-two-six-seven-six-nine-three-three, and we'll get you hooked up. That's all I have.
Thank you, Danny. Are there any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you. Jeremiah Still?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unless you have questions about the report, I'll just highlight a couple of things that's going on right now. We're probably, hopefully, one day away from completing the L-MIG paving program, asphalt plant, and good hope we cooperate. We should be through with all the overlay tomorrow. We're about a week and a half, maybe two weeks out on the We should be through with all the overlay tomorrow. We're about a week and a half, maybe two weeks out on the striping. And then the streets that do need it will go back in and have to build some shoulders. Everything's turned out really good. All the roads are riding good and smooth. We're pleased with the way that's going on. Another thing, we're almost through hauling the dirt off of the South Madison Lot with the demo. We'll get it graded out probably in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll be encompassed with the holidays. Like Mr. Kroy said earlier, we'll spend a couple of weeks in the park getting the lights up, and everything will be very festive for the holidays.
Are there any questions for Mr. Still?
I don't know if you're as excited about, about, I mean, because y'all do a ton of work for the holidays, but it's really awesome. And I will go overboard appreciating you. Y'all just do an excellent job. So thank you. Mr. McGuire, Telecom?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things I want to roll through real quick. At the time I pulled the report here for our fiber installations, we were four short from hitting the 3,000 mark of completed fiber installations since we started our big push back in February of 2003. I tried to find every fiber install that I could find to see if I could just get it to 3,000, but I came up four short. The good news is, as of today, we're over that mark. So that's a good, big milestone for us. We've been working hard north area of town. They just spun up the Green Acres area. We just did Phillips Drive and part of Cedar Ridge, and they're currently working their way back down through the Walton Road area, back towards the Marable-Gratus area. So obviously making good progress on that. We're getting very close to being done for the infrastructure side. Obviously, splicing is always what takes the longest spot there, but I hope in the next month or two to be able to visually show you all exactly where everything's been deployed. We've started putting that together. And it's pretty exciting to look at. So we're getting really excited of getting close to a a completion point in this fiber deployment process. The conversion's still, still taking its time to get customers converted over. We're still adding new customers as we go along, so it's a win-win either way. We've reached 1,000 of the in-home wireless units. We've deployed in-house for our customers. That's almost 20% of all of our active customers have our in-house wireless unit. Those are great. They help us. They're great troubleshooting utilities. When a customer tells me they have problems, I'm able to go in there and look and get data out of them. And, oh, you got a TV that's way, way far back in the back bedroom. It's poor signal. That's what's going on back there. So those have turned out to be really, really useful to us, and customers really seem to like those a lot. So we've been very fortunate to put as many in as we have. The GDOT project for the bypass out here in Union Drive, that portion for the telecom relocation of it, it's all complete. We're done there. Brandon Brown did a phenomenal job of working with crews and in-house crews to get that done in a timely and efficient manner. So we're really excited to have that done. We also just picked up a new full-time hire and two interns for our support center. So our support center has gone from two employees to technically five individuals that work in there now, which has been great. We're currently getting them trained up. They literally just started a week or two ago, so we're getting them trained up. Have more boots on the ground to get into people's homes, to help them diagnose problems that don't require a bucket truck role. I literally just went to a customer's house the other day. He claimed we switched to his fiber, broke all of his stuff, and his problem was the batteries in his home camera were out. So, you know, just trying to do stuff like that to help the customers understand it's, it's not our issue. It's something else going on, and I don't have to tie up an expensive bucket truck at somebody's house to do that. So really excited to have them. And Mr. Bailey already hit on thanking everybody, but I just wanted to say from the Telecom Department, thanks to all the, the extra departments that pitched in for Helene, and special thanks to Rodney for making sure that those guys who worked through the wee hours of the night and everything were fed and taken care of, and I really appreciate that. So if I have, anybody has any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. McGuire?
One question that everybody's asking, and I know it's not lying on us, but it is in the sense. When is the downtown service or phone's gonna ever approved? Do we have an update on the tower and the water tower and the contract?
Yeah, I know you've been working on a bit with that.
So we are still in the middle of negotiations with T-Mobile and AT&amp;T. Those, those contracts have been provided to them for review. We're waiting on their comments back. We've been working with GMA, so I'm hoping, I don't, I don't want to put a timeline on it, but hopefully maybe by the end of the year, we can have those contracts signed and ready, and then maybe have a date for their equipment being installed.
That's gonna be the biggest news we've had in years. So thank you, Chris. Moving to Mr. Middlebrooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll cut mine real short since we're gonna be talking about two of my big projects next. The 2022 CDBG is starting to wrap up finally. We've got some paving that's taking place. Thank God. The, next week we'll be kicking off, we'll have a kickoff meeting with the engineer and grant staff for the 2025 grant. It'll be a sewer rehab project again. And the pre-construction meeting for our 24-inch raw water line that you approved last month will be Thursday. And I look forward to getting that one kicked off, and that's all I got. If you've got any questions on the rest, I'll...
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Middlebrooks? Thank you, Rodney. We're gonna come right back to you for utility requests.
All right. So I'm asking for your approval tonight for the, to award the 4-inch steel high-pressure gas main job project to Southern Pipeline. They were the low bid at $1,118,016. This is the 4-inch line that'll leave the warehouse, go down Sarls, Marable, Union, cross Under 78, come up Remish Lane, out Cherry Hill, cross back up Under 78, and feed the jail as well as the industrial park.
Thank you, Rodney. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. And we're coming back to you, Rodney, for the bid award of the water transmission main.
Thank you, Mayor. Asking for your approval to award the 16-inch finished water main. This will be the transmission main to the tank at Cherry Hill. This will take the same exact route as the gas line, except for it'll come out in front of the old water plant and go down Marable. Won't be on Sarls at all. But both of these projects, both engineers have worked hand-in-hand to make this as simple as possible. So the low bid was UWS in the amount of $2,278,434.
Are there any questions for Rodney?
I do want to note that the tank component, we're going back to the drawing board on. So we need to go ahead and get this line constructed, but we're probably gonna downsize that tank a little bit to get it within budget.
It was a bit excessive.
Bit excessive.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
Is this price within the budget that we had looked at?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Give that one to Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Now moving to old business, rezone at 1125 North Broad Street from the Rowell Family Partnership. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is the rezon request, just reorient you with the request from last month. The request to rezon the property from B3 to PRD and PCD. This is 107, or excuse me, 105 acres at the southwest corner of Charlotte Rowell Boulevard and North Broad Street. And if you recall, last month, this was a complex mixed-use project that was proposed. And since council tabled at the last month's meeting, the only changes to the actual plan itself were some updates to the pattern book. And that was, I'm just reading these off the screen behind you, but removing the exemption for large-scale multifamily buildings designated as workforce housing, so they can comply with the facade articulation standards for page 100. There were updates to the illustration for medium-scale multifamily buildings and large-scale multifamily buildings on the following page. And they also removed the exemption for those to forego the individual ground floor access for that type of building. And they also removed the exemption to allow the large-scale multifamily buildings designated as workforce housing to use identical facades within line of sight of another building with the same design. Just to recap, though, they had updated the graphical representation for the large-scale multifamily. It's an improvement over what was originally approved and certainly was worth a revision to that plan and something certainly that staff supports. And again, the recommendation for the project is approval with these changes that have been made with the original conditions that were recommended by the Planet Commission meeting two months ago.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Thank each of you for taking time out of your schedules to meet with the team from TPUDC. I think it went a long way to getting us where we want them and for their, their long-term success. I'll entertain a motion.
A move to approve, subject to stated conditions.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second, but I would also like to say thank you very much to Brian Wright and team, Mr. Rowell, everybody who's been involved with this project. Thank you for your patience with us as we just sought to make sure we were doing the best thing we could for our citizens, and thank you for being willing to do the same. So I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And all in favor? So yeah. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Brian, thank you. I got a chance to talk to him. I said, it's always nice to go into a meeting and come out of the meeting feeling like you're smarter than when you went in. I mean, he's just so bright. And it was a nice choice, Lee. Moving to new business, the rezon at 1125. We just removed that. Sorry. Final plat, Brooklyn Commons. Mr. Calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for final plat approval. It's the project on Good Hope Road. If y'all recall, this is the Brooklyn Commons project. It's approximately 43 acres in size. It had a total of 142 residential units inside of it. That was 98 single-family detached and 44 townhomes. Almost all of it is entirely rear-loaded access to the homes, except for 21 lots in the rear of the project. And just a little quick snapshot, that had two product entrances located off Good Hope Road. It goes into their existing street network, and they've installed all of the required utilities and infrastructure for final plat approval and public street dedication. The alleyways themselves will remain private and maintained by the Homeowners Association. Request is pretty straightforward. They've complied with all of our flat, final plat requirements. They've submitted all the required documentation agreements to the city, and the recommendation to the council is approval as submitted without any need for correction or change.
Thank you, Mr. Calendar. Are there any questions for Brad? Are you none? All in entertaining a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson. A second? Give that one to Ms. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Next, we move to the appointment of the library board. I need a motion to appoint Ms. Andrea Dowdy for a six-year term to expire on June 30th, 2030. You have a motion? Motion by Ms. Malcolm. A second? So give that one to Ms. Crawford. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to two appointments for the Housing Authority. First, I need a motion to reappoint Mary Watson for a five-year term to expire on October 6th, 2029. You have a motion, please? Motion by Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Next, I need a motion to reappoint Makita Swords for a five-year term to expire on October 6th, 2029. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Is there a second? Give that to Ms. Sams. Is there any discussion? Are you none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. That passes. Moving to the renewal of the health and ancillary insurance. Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We're here tonight to talk about our renewal for the health insurance for 2025 coming up. And I'm joined with John Leggett from MSI today to go through the details. I just want to make a couple of high-level observations real quick. This is our eighth year of working with MSI. They've been a good broker for us to find some real savings in the plan. And when I say real savings, that's, you know, a little bit of air quotes around that, because health insurance is expensive. We all know that. We keep hearing about it on TV. Logan and I have long conversations trying to figure out how we're going to best position our health plan in the future. This year, we're, we're expected claims to be around $4 million. We're running about 72% in the aggregate on that. So is that good or bad? We think it's pretty good because you estimate hopefully around 80% is what you're gonna set your thresholds at. So we're coming in every year a little bit below. I want to attribute it to a couple of things that we've done as an organization in the last few years. One is just really getting on this fitness kick and trying to get people to take advantage of our Walton Athletic memberships and things like that. We just finished our PHAs, our biometric screenings, to tell everybody how you're doing as far as your blood pressure and your cholesterol and things that people don't like to talk about normally. But it's become competitive. I liked it last week when we were downstairs and everybody was comparing their numbers. And they're getting excited about the fact that they're getting a little bit better, a little bit healthier. We had 176 people that did that. We insure right now about 223 employees. So to get that many to come out to do the biometric screening and be competitive about it is kind of fun. But that's what helps keep us in that loss ratio. Now, I will tell you that it was six, six large claims that killed the plan every year. And those are, unfortunately, those kind of claims that you can't avoid. They're just gonna be there. They're ones that you don't like to have to face. But the good news is, is we've got medications these days, and we've got doctors who are very talented at helping heal those severe illnesses. So that's where it comes from. That's why the costs are so high. But Mr. Rosenthal, I can go into much more detail on the biometrics if you want me to. We give our associates, as you know, wellness deductible credits. We start out with a deductible. It's at $1,750. And if they pass everything on their fitness, on their nicotine usage, on all the blood pressure, A1C and glucose and cholesterol, they can buy their deductible down to zero every year, and that's pretty phenomenal. We have about 812 people, something like that, that get every one of the credits. But then the other 170 are getting their credits as well, and that's what makes it interesting. And is, if you look around our organization, I think you see people beginning to look and wear their clothes better and all that kind of good stuff. Anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to John, who's gonna go through the specifics of the renewal. Thanks, John.
Hey, good evening. John Leggett with the MSI Benefits Group. Thanks for having me here. I got about 20 slides, and I will, there's a lot of information here. I'm gonna, I won't fly through it, but I'm not gonna go through detail of every, every single slide. Oh, there we go. Okay. It worked. Some small numbers on here, but I like, I want to talk about, this is a recap of 2023. Obviously, we're in 2024, and we're gonna be talking about 2025. How the, how the overall claims ran were last year and the stop-loss claims that last mentioned. For 2023, we did run at 73% of the, of the max, so we generally budget 80%. So we ran 7% better overall from a claim liability in '23 at about $3.3 million compared to, oh, I'm sorry, we ran just over $3 million when the budget number of the expected liability was right at $3.3 million. So we're, we ran about 73%, which is about $240,000 below expected. So overall, the claims ran well. What the next slide shows is what really drives it. This is our high-cost claimants. You know, the, the city is self-funded, partially self-funded, and has stop-loss reinsurance protection so that when those large claimants, you know, when that number gets to that, that cap, the, the stop-loss kicks in and covers anything above that. And so you pay a premium for that, and when you're looking at how the numbers ran in 2023, we had just under $1.1 million in stop-loss reimbursements. We had 10 members that went over that $70,000 stop-loss deductible. So the, the target loss ratio is 65%, and we ran... deductible. So the the target loss ratio is 65%, and we ran at about 100 and where's the number, 154%. So, and that was 2023. The next slide shows us how that led into 2024. So for 2024, we did renew with Meritane, CVS, and the Aetna network. In 2023, our stop-loss carrier was HCC, and they requested a 43% increase. We did go to market. We kept everything the same, but we did change stop-loss carriers to Crum and Foster. We increased the stop-loss deductible from 70,000 to 80,000, and that got our premium increase down to 26,000. So we did see a $26,000 increase for this year, but obviously, that was much better than the 362,000. So overall, for 2024, we kept the plans, the the out-of-pocket, the health plan. We did bump that up a bit, and the deductions went up 2% for employees. And the overall budgeted number for 2024 was about 2%. We reviewed the dental and vision and life and disability coverage as well. There were no changes on on any of those. So now we get into 2024 and how this year. Again, it's funny, the same number. We're running about 73% of the of the ag of the max, which is again, 7% better than expected. So as you look at it there, you'll see our expected liability is about 3.7 million. And if you analyze those claims out, we'll be right around 3.1 million overall for the year, which is again, another $270,000 below expected. What's really driving the renewal again this year is, once again, as Mr. Les mentioned, the high-cost claimants. This report has 29 members on it that have exceeded 25% of the stop-loss deductible. We have six members so far that have a total of 800, nearly 840,000 through August in reimbursements. And there are a couple lasers that I'll mention, but you know, a laser is when they bump up the deductible from from 80,000 and they single out one individual and have a much higher deductible. Those actual claimants are running better than expected. So through August, we have ran a lot higher on the stop-loss reimbursements than expected. The next slide is our renewal. So current renewal, we're not seeing any, there's no changes to the administrative costs. So we're at Meritane, the Aetna company is our TPA, our third-party administrator. And there's no changes in the fixed cost with with Meritane. If you if you go over to the renewal, you'll see the the highlighted number of $6.14 are carving out the stop, are carving out the pharmacy coverage to Veracity. And I'm going to spend a minute on that here in a minute. So this is a proposed change we're looking to make for 2025 is with the pharmacy coverage. Right now, it's with CVS. We're looking to put that with Veracity. And when you take the pharmacy away from Meritane, an Aetna company, CVS is all-in-one, they say, okay, we're going to hit you with a $6 carve-out fee. And so that's what that $6 is. The $14 is a is what Veracity charges. That's a per employee per month fee. And all total, our annual fixed cost of about 160,000 will go to 215,000 under that arrangement. If you come down below, you're going to see the 705,000 for stop-loss and the and the 33,000 for the aggregate stop-loss going to 100, or sorry, 1,056 and 35,000. You'll also see that's a 50% rate cap. That is obviously a big increase. The contract that we put in place with with Crum and Foster did have a 50% rate cap and a no-new laser in it. And so because of that, that's why it's capped at 50,000 or 50%. All in all, our fixed cost under the renewal would be going up about 45% from 900,000 to about 1.3. If you come down below, you'll see our claim liability is currently expected, you know, 4% claim liability. That's much better than trend. Again, we've had back-to-back years where our claims have ran well. It's just our stop-loss claims, claims that are driving these those increases in premium. So on the bottom, skipping down below, you'll see we have employee cost. Currently, the employees, the 223 employees are spending, are paying in payroll deductions about 595,000. We're projecting, we're proposing a 2% increase in employee deduction. So that would go to the 607,000 that you see there. And all in all, under that renewal option, the projected increase with claims and our premium going up, it would be about a $528,000 increase or 13%. Now, 134,000 of that is claim liability and 405,000 is premium increase. If you go over to option one, we're looking to, the only difference in option one compared to the renewal is taking the stop-loss deductible up from 80,000 to 90,000. By doing that, we lower our stop-loss premium. You'll notice that instead of going in 1.3 million, or I guess should say 1,056, it goes to 973,000. That's about an 80,000, 79,000 premium difference. But what that also does is it increases our claim liability. Obviously, the city's paying an additional 10, up to an additional 10,000 on members. So when you come down below, it looks and it's like, well, these numbers are relatively the same. Well, our claims have been running well. Your claims are your claims. I would recommend a lower premium. That's a guaranteed savings versus continuing to pay a higher premium, and meanwhile, our claims are going to remain. So option one is the recommended option that, of course, does include Veracity. And Veracity is the big one here. I'm going to talk about Veracity. You'll remember the 510,000. That's that's the total budgeted projected cost increase based on option one. So I'll reference that here in a minute. Some other side notes. Well, obviously, we did go to market, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. There were no other competitive carriers to Crum and Foster because they had that 50% rate cap, meaning they would have liked to have gone over 50,000 or 50%. And the market wouldn't even touch it, even though they were at a rate cap. So Crum and Foster is our best option. We did get one other carrier, and I'll show you here in a second. The other thing I just want to point out is the $5,000 wellness fund will also contend continue into 2025. The next slide, this is our stop-loss marketing results. Again, we went to 15 different markets, and option one and option three up there are the only proposals that we received from Granular. And they don't have a no-new, no-new laser contract. They would have been hitting us with a $700,000, $800,000, and $500,000 additional laser liability. So overall, it was a bit a 31% increase or 32% increase with those two carriers. And the next slide shows you all the different markets and who all decline. And again, they decline because they can't be competitive with where we're at with Crum and Foster. So this was our stop-loss marketing results. I flew through that. Maybe you want to go back. I don't know if there's any question. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Okay. The only proposed changes that we're looking to make on the health plan is we're looking to keep the the same deductible, the coinsurance, ECP co-pay, all of that will remain the same. We're looking to add an urgent care co-pay. Right now, members are responsible for paying 20% to see an urgent care provider after they've met their deductible. And we're looking to add a $75 co-pay. That's more in line with what you see. And then additionally, a $500 ER co-pay instead of a member having to pay the full deductible and coinsurance when they go to the emergency room. Additionally, it's kind of been laid out year after year. We're looking to increase the overall out-of-pocket to 3,500 and 7,000 for, so 3,500 for an individual, 7,000 for a family. It's currently at 3,250 and 6,500. So we're looking to bump that up 250 on each. And then the the 2% increase that I mentioned in a payroll deduction. So right now, you know, someone's paying 1522 a paycheck for single coverage, that'd go to 1552. A family would see about, someone with family coverage would see about a $4 bi-weekly increase. Those are the only changes we're proposing to the health plan. Next slide. So the big one here, and again, I'll show you the the savings projected. So MSI works with a lot of governments. That's mostly what we work with in Georgia, our local governments. And the county actually is one of our clients. And the county moved to Veracity a few years ago. We have about 20 clients that have that have Veracity in place as their pharmacy benefit manager. And they've done a fantastic job. We've been working with them since 2020. They're a local company. Veracity is the program manager, and ProCare is actually the PBM, the pharmacy benefit manager, and they're located in Gainesville. They have about 500 employees. And but what Veracity does is they take these five different things, and they have really generated a lot of savings in pharmacy costs. The contract, they eliminate the spread pricing in certain drugs. There are certain drugs out there that, you know, they they increase the actual price of the drug on the back end. You know, it may be a $5 drug, and they're selling it for $10. Well, that's a 100% markup. So there's none of the spread pricing. And everyone's probably familiar with GoodRx, and you you see the commercials, and you may have used it. And it's like, why can I get my my prescription cheaper through GoodRx than my health plan? Well, it's due to spread pricing. So they eliminate the spread pricing. They set up a select and non-select pharmacy. And this only applies to generic drugs. And it says something up there that I'll correct. But for a select pharmacy for generic drugs, members will pay nothing. For a non-select, your members will pay $20. Now, it says CVS, Target, Walgreens, and Rite Aid. Those are our non-select pharmacies. But we're actually going to make sure that CVS is going to be listed as select. So basically, anybody that goes to Target, Walgreens, or Rite Aid will pay $20. If they go to any of the local pharmacies, Carmichael's, Carmichael's here, local pharmacy, they're going to pay nothing for those generic medications. And it's because they're cheaper pharmacies. The formulary management, they they lower the therapeutic drugs. They eliminate the the cost that's put into drugs for pharmacy rebates. You guys currently get rebates now. I think we had about 203,000 for last year that was paid back to the city. You'll continue to get pharmacy rebates paid back to the city, but your rebates are going to drop because they eliminate some of those added costs in there. The two big ones are on the bottom. Personal importation, these are insulin-like GLP-1 drugs. And this is where the big money is going to be saved on that one and the manufacturer's assistance. Anybody that's taken a drug that that's available through personal importation will be able to get it at no cost to them, mailed to their house every month. And it's a minimum savings of 50% to the city. So that's a big one. We have folks that just simply sign up if they're eligible, if they're on that type of drug. They they enroll in the program. They start getting it every month, no cost. Some drugs come in the the big styrofoam boxes. But the bottom one is is the absolute biggest. There are drug, these high-cost drugs. If you, one of my favorite things to do with my wife at night is to Google the cost of a drug when you see a commercial and ask her, how much do you think that drug costs? It's our specialty drugs that are really driving the cost for our health plan, for our pharmacy plan. And all these drug manufacturers have foundations that they set up, and members can tap into those foundations and get the drug at no cost. And that means the employer is not paying the cost. So you get these high-cost drugs that are 2,000, 3,000. I mean, they're, we see drugs that are 20, 30,000 a month, getting those off the plan. And that's the manufacturer's assistance program. And Veracity reaches out to these members. There may be some information they need to provide, but they get it. It's again, mailed to them. There's nothing they have to do. And when we come back the second year after open enrollment, folks that are enrolled in these programs are praising it like never before. It's the greatest thing. They were spending all this money, and now they're getting these drugs every month, mailed to them, no cost. And of course, that means the city's not paying for it. So I'll give you an example. The next slide, this is a report that, this was a county down south in 2020. They spent just over 3 million, I think it's, yeah, just over 3 million in pharmacy alone. And you can see where their numbers have been since then. They've literally cut their spend in half and year after year. So they've seen about a $1.5 million savings annually. And they provide these reports every month. The next slide is is what Veracity is proposing for the city. We provided them with RX information, and they come back and they tell us, this is our estimated savings report. And I will say, we've gotten one of these for every single one of our near 20 clients, and they've always been over. Never seen them underestimate. So they're saying we're going to see about a $435,000 reduction in pharmacy costs for 2025 under this program. And the reason I said, remember that 510,000? So that's the the budgeted increase with our claims and our premium. Well, if we do see that 435,000, we're more likely looking like a 1%, 2%, 3% increase for 2025. So hopefully, that number will be in excess of 500,000. But we've seen it work. Their customer service is fantastic, and and they really have done great things for for employers and their pharmacy spend. Next is the dental. We do want to recommend a change here. Delta Dental is on the far right, and we're looking at an increase with MetLife. We asked MetLife because we've had some complaints about the reimbursements to dentists being a little bit lower than it should be, and and members getting hit with balance bills. So we we asked them to bump their out-of-network schedule, fee schedule up. And so that's where you see the 99 percentile. And by doing that, that took it to about a 15% increase. But Delta Dental is one of the better dental carriers around. If you ask, most dentists will tell you that. We never have a whole lot of complaints. So we went to them and got a proposal. It's actually a better plan. They're adding adult orthodontia for, under the, under the contract, and it's about a 2% reduction for doing that. So we're making a recommendation to go to Delta. No other changes. The vision, we asked Delta Dental. I used to always say Delta, all they do is dental, but they got into the vision market, and they're still a little bit too high there. So we're actually making a recommendation to stay with MetLife. It's just a bigger gap than we'd like to see. So no, 4% increase on the voluntary vision plan with Met. One other benefit that most employers, I will say, most employers, City Monroe size has is a flexible spending account. This is something that we're making a recommendation to roll out for employees to sign up for if they'd like. This is a, call it a, it's a pre-taxed program. So it's a tax-free loan essentially that employees get. They're able to take an amount out of their paycheck. They get a card upfront loaded with that money on it, say they do $1,000. They're paying the city back tax-free for the for the remainder of the year. And they have this card loaded with the $1,000. It's a Visa. It might be a MasterCard. And they use that card to pay for medical, dental, and vision expenses when they go. They can use it for their spouse and their children, even if they're not under the health plan. The IRS does regulate this. So the maximum is $3,200 for 2025. And and the, actually, it's 3,300. I just saw a mistake. So it's 3,300 for 2025. And $660 can be rolled over year after year. It used to be use it or lose it, but employees can actually say, I didn't spend as much as I budgeted for. I need to keep it. And they can roll it over. So there is a fee to this program. It's $4 per participant per month. And generally speaking, based on the the matching FICA that the city's not paying, it's almost a wash. There's really administratively, it's from an admin cost, it's almost a wash, really no cost to the city. The other thing that we would always recommend is setting a minimum of at least $250. You don't want someone signing up for $50 and the city's being billed 48 in admin expenses. So one, one thing we are looking to recommend is putting an FSA in for next year. The next two slides, there's no changes. They were up for renewal. So our life and disability are not changing. It's with standard. So we're, we're in a rate lock for 2025 for the basic life, voluntary life, short-term and long-term. Next, it's those slides. And this is just a timeline. We have open enrollment generally takes place in November. So we're here today to hopefully get the benefits confirmed. We'll generate benefit guides, get those out to the employees, and then open enrollment will begin using the online portal that we we provide. So the last slide is our 2025 recommendation for the plant, for the city's benefits. Option two, renew with Meritane, Aetna, Crum and Foster, change pharmacy coverage to Veracity, increase the specific stop-loss deductible to 90,000. On the medical plan, add a $75 urgent care co-pay, $500 ER co-pay, increase the annual out-of-pocket maximum by 250, and increase employee deductions by 2%. Change plan to Delta Dental on the dental plan, renew with MetLife on vision, offer the FSA, and no changes on the life and disability. I got through it as quick as I could.
Pretty good. Are there any questions for Mr. Leggett? Thank you. Thank you for that work. Les?
Yeah, I just want to close with one, you know, one more statement, and that is, you know, we've, we've offered, I think, some world-class benefits to the employees of the city. And one of our commitments that we made a few years back was that we were going to try to hold the cost down for the employees. We've been adding a 2% increase in each one of these years. Medical inflation is high, and I'm just going to challenge the the council. At some point, we may have to reconsider our 2% increase. It's high. The city is luckily, I think, in a pretty good position to be able to absorb it again this year. But we're doing other things as well to try to get these costs down. For instance, I just want to, you know, publicly thank Piedmont Walton for being a great partner. They come over and they do the biometrics for us. They charge us just the cost of what it costs to do the biometric screening. And then they're also working with us right now to see if we can't do some direct bill on lab work when people have to have blood work done, and also when they go to their urgent care. So we're trying to, you know, minimize the impact as much as we can through those kind of programs. But again, 2% is very generous. We're seeing, you know, these medical programs go up 13% to 18% every year. I'm not sure how much longer we want to sustain that or can sustain. I'm not sure how much longer we want to sustain that or can sustain that. You know, the old adage is, the people that have never used the plan think we charge too much. The people that use the plan occasionally or have had a dire emergency and really needed that plan think we don't charge enough because they're lifesavers. But anyway, any questions? Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you coming in. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gregory is our second. Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the resolution for the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program Grant, Mr. Bailey.
You know, and in case anybody was wondering, I was not one of those five to eight people that got all the health credits. Just I was wondering.
I know. I figured that was the question of the night. Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm on borrowed time. I lost a few. So this is a resolution and subsequent acceptance for a grant that we are applying for through the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program. And it's through the Georgia DNR. It's for the initial start of the development of the river park. And it's a $3 million grant with a 1.1 million match on our side should we get it. And that puts us at a 26.8% match. And there's significance to that because it gives us more points towards the pre-application process to hopefully then be accepted and actually go through the application process and then the subsequent award and design. So needed resolution and acceptance to be able to apply for that grant.
Are there any questions for Chris? Generally, I know, I know. Generally, I'm going to ask you, does council wish to have the resolution read? Most of you say no, but I really would like to hear this. Paul, do you mind?
Anything you ask, Mayor. This is a resolution that whereas at the regular meeting, the City Monroe, Walton County, Georgia, held on October 8, 2024, a motion was made and duly seconded. The City Monroe agrees to submit a pre-application for funding for the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program by way of the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. The City Monroe further agrees that in the event the City of Monroe's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, the City Monroe certifies and assures that it has the ability and intention to finance the 26.8% of the total matching project funding and will move forward with due diligence to prepare or have prepared appropriate documentation required for a formal application in the spring of 2025 and subsequent final approval of project agreements in the summer of 2025. So resolved this 8th day of October, Mayor. That is the resolution.
That is perfect. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson is their second.
Second.
By Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, one step closer.
Thank you.
First reading of the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefits Restated Defined Benefit Retirement Plan Ordinance Amendment. Logan Probst.
So of course, we can offer a waiver of a second reading on this. But we're actually just revisiting an issue from last month and putting it in the form of an ordinance to satisfy GMEBS as some of the IRS compliance and laws have changed. And GMEBS, our pension plan provider, has requested that we update all of our documents. And this is a six-year cycle for the DB plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Logan? I'm going to guess council doesn't want to have the ordinance read, but anybody opposed to that? The second reading will be next month. Moving to the first reading of the temporary moratorium on all rezones, annexations, and conditional uses, barenesses, and certificate of appropriate applications in the city limits. Mr. Probst.
Again, we're taking up this rezone moratorium extension as we embark on a major code rewrite and update. And we just want to make sure we get it through planning and zoning and through you guys in subsequent months. And then staff has just a little bit of time to lay everything out and be prepared for when the applications are coming back in for rezones.
Perfect. Thank you, Logan. Any questions? Council wish to have the ordinance read? I'll leave that answer. Second reading will be next month.
Mayor, if y'all want to consider waiving second reading because your moratorium is set to expire at the end of the middle of this month, that would then take this moratorium out to January 31 as drafted. You would need a three-quarter vote under Section 296 of the Code of Ordinances to waive second reading and pass and make a motion to approve or deny it this evening.
Great. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
Move to waive the second reading.
Mr. Gregory, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, do I entertain the motion for the moratorium?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Tyler. And I'm guessing second from Greg. Second by Greg Thompson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Thank you, everybody. Special events ordinance, first reading, Mr. Probst.
What we have before you is a response to what we've talked about in the past, where we have certain special events, oftentimes on private property, things that require special events permits come to us. We need a better way to manage that. So we've drafted up with legal counsel here a new ordinance that will help us be able to properly administer the special events permits and costs and so on and so forth. Paul, do you want to hit any of those highlights on it?
Yeah, I'll be happy to. Thank you, Logan. So this came to us, has come to us a couple different times on basically private events that are held on private property. Plus, you also have a lot of public gathering spaces coming online, your Newtown Green. And so what this policy does is it's essentially a public gathering policy. And it recognizes the right of the freedom of speech, freedom to assemble, and balances those very important First Amendment rights with our compelling state interest to manage and make sure that resources are available to deal with those sort of things. And so in particular, when you have events that are on private property that may have an overly, an overburden of city resources needs, such as closing streets, extra sanitation control, those sort of things, it requires the folks to just get with the city, file for an application. This is very standard-type ordinance. It's in cities all across the state of Georgia. And so this is a new chapter. Your Code of Ordinances is called special events. And this is the public gathering component. And in a few months, we'll actually bring back another one for you to address another sort of public resource strain, and that is the filming movies. I know that's kind of cut back a little bit. But there's a second one that we'll bring to you in the next few months where you consider there. So there's a more formal application process for the city to be able to handle those impacts on city services. So this is before you. We spent a lot of time on this one to make sure and get it just right. Encourage you to read it. If you have any comments, feedback, please let us know. We've talked with other city attorneys. We've borrowed and stolen some of their language from some ordinances and cleaned it up and made it a little bit better, we think. But it does a really good job of balancing the difference, balancing the realities of recognizing and embracing and supporting First Amendment freedom of speech and freedom of assembly rights with the need for the city to be able to regulate its property and not expend overly exert city resources on events without proper permitting. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have and talk through it any way you need me to.
Are there any questions for Paul? Okay, to have it read. Please read the ordinance.
I will read the ordinance. This is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe, Georgia, add Chapter 84, Special Events of the City Code of Ordinances. The mayor and council of City Monroe hereby ordain as follows. Article 1, the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe, Georgia, is hereby amended to below text amendments of the Code of Ordinances. Please see Exhibit A, which includes the entirety of the new text amendment added. It's Chapter 84. Article 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article 3, this ordinance will take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and council. Going to Exhibit A, Chapter 84, Special Events, Section 84-1, Purpose and Intent. Section 84-2, Definitions, Sub 1 Producer, Sub 2 Special Event, Sub 3 Special Event Permit or Permits, Sub 4 Vendor.
Mr. Rosenthal, would you mind? Mr. Mayor, just in case it was misinterpreted that I was saying yes, I wanted it read.
No, no.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure. Because you saw me shaking my head yes, and you thought that's why he needed to...
Do you mind if I have him read it was...
You do. You do whatever you need to do.
So...
I just tried to save Paul over there.
I'm here all night, don't worry. I get paid by the word. Would you like me to continue? Sub 5 City, Section 84-3 Authority, Sub A, B, C, and D. Section 84-4 Permit Conditions, Sub A, B, C, D, E, F, G, Sub 1, 2, and 3, subsection H. Section 84-5 Permit Application Deadline Content and Fees, Sub A, 1, and 2, 3. Sub B, 1 through 13, and Sub C. Section 84-6 Emergency Permit, Sub A and Sub B. Section 84-7 Permit Fees, City Services and Costs, Sub A, B, C, D, and E. Section 84-8 Exemptions, Sub A, B, C, and D. Section 84-9 Final Approval of the Permit Review Period, Sub A, Sub B. Section 84-10 The Appeal Procedure, Sub A and Sub B. Section 84-11 Violations and Penalties, Sub A, B, and C. Section 84-12 Liability, Sub A, B, and C. Section 84-13 Vendors of Food and Merchandise, Sub A, B, C, D, and E. Section 84-14 Vendors of Alcoholic Beverages. Section 84-15 Miscellaneous Provisions Regarding Vendors A and B. And Section 84-16 Severability. I can read it verbatim if you'd like, Mayor. That is a summation of the ordinance that's being proposed. All right. Article 3, this ordinance will take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and city council. This constitutes the first reading on the 8th day of October, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Per Ordinance 2-96, the second reading will need to be waived so the ordinance can take effect tonight. Could I have a motion to waive the second reading? Ms. Malcolm is the second, and Tyler, you take the second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Now, I'll entertain a motion for the ordinance. Motion to approve by Ms. Sams is second. Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the first reading of the Alcoholic Beverage Ordinance Amendment, Mr. Probst.
All right. We're revisiting this issue, and I'll let Mr. Rosenthal go and sit a little bit more. But we are basically redoing our amendment to the pouring times of the alcoholic beverage code ordinances.
I'll take it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Logan. Mayor and council, so as you know, you guys passed an amendment to your alcohol ordinance back in July that changed your pour times, cut off to 12:00 AM midnight instead of 1:00 AM midnight. Additionally, you added a provision to require patrons to leave the premises by essentially an hour after at 1:00 AM. You passed this back at the July meeting. You waived the reading as you're authorized to do under Section 2-96. Litigation has been initiated against the City Monroe. There's been no service on it. I'm not going to comment on the litigation other than to comment as to this, which I think I included in an email to all of you. The easiest way for all of us to solve this is we're just going to pass it again, and there's going to be no question. So I'm going to ask that you not waive second reading. I'm going to read this ordinance in its entirety. And then when it comes back before you on November 12, we will pass it again. And I do want it to be real clear that we in no way, shape, or form think that the reading and the passage that occurred in July of this year at your council meeting on July the 9th was in any way defective or any way insufficient. I don't think that it is. But rather than get into detailed procedural disagreements and legal arguments in front of one of our Walton County Superior Court judges, the most efficient way for all of us to deal with this, we're just going to pass it again. So if you would indulge me this one time. This is an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe, Georgia, regarding permitted sale and use of alcohol inside the city limits. Mayor and council of City Monroe hereby ordain as follows. Article 1, the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe is hereby amended by implementing the below text amendments related to the noted sections of Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances, as follows. Please see Exhibit A, attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference for the complete text amendment. Please note that text which is stricken shall be removed from the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe. Text which is underlined shall be added to the Code of Ordinances of City Monroe. Exhibit A reads as follows. Chapter 6, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 6-84, Hours and Days of Sale. Sub A, distilled spirits shall not be sold for consumption on the premises except between the hours of 9:00 AM until 12:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. Sub B, distilled spirits shall not be sold for consumption at any time in violation of state law or any local ordinance or regulation or of any special order of the mayor and city council. Sub C, the sale of distilled spirits for consumption on the premises is permitted on Sundays from 11:00 AM until 12:00 midnight, provided a Sunday sales license has been obtained. Sub D, distilled spirits may be sold for consumption on the premises from 12:00 midnight to 1:30 AM on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. Subsection E, licensees holding a retail consumption dealer license under Article 2 of this chapter shall not permit patrons to remain on their premises after 1:00 AM, Monday through Sunday, except on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. The licensee may permit patrons to remain on the premises until 2:00 AM. Section 6, 108, Hours and Days of Sale. Sub A, beer or wine shall not be sold for consumption on the premises except between the hours of 9:00 AM and 12:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. Subsection B, no beer or wine shall be sold for consumption at any time in violation of state law or any local ordinance or regulation or of any special order of the mayor and city council. Sub C, the sale of beer or wine on the premises is permitted on Sundays from 11:00 AM until 12:00 midnight, provided a Sunday sales license has been obtained. Sub D, beer and/or wine may be sold for consumption on the premises from 12:00 midnight to 1:30 AM on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. Sub E, licensees holding a retail consumption dealer license under Article 3 of this chapter shall not permit patrons to remain on their premises after 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, except on January 1, New Year's Day of any year. The licensee may permit patrons to remain on their premises until 2:00 AM. Section 6, 335, Hours and Days of Sale. Subsection A, no alcoholic beverages shall be sold for consumption on the premises of private clubs, except between the hours of 9:00 AM and 12:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. Sub B, alcoholic beverages shall not be sold for consumption at any time in violation of any state or local law or local ordinance or regulation or of any special order of the mayor and city council. Sub C, the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises is permitted on Sundays from 12:30 PM until 12:00 midnight in a private club or sports club, provided a Sunday sales license has been obtained. Article 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article 3, this ordinance shall take effect from and after its adoption by the mayor and council of the City Monroe, Georgia. This constitutes the first reading this 8th day of October 2024, Mayor. That is the ordinance's first reading. We'll have it back before you for a second reading and request that you pass on it on November 12, even though our legal position is you already passed it back on July the night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I completely agree. We will have the second reading next month. Moving to District Items, Ms. Malcolm. Ms. Crawford. Mr. Boyce. Ms. Sams. Ms. Brown.
Yes, I do, actually. Monroe Estates, which is located near the airport. We kicked off with the cleanup, I believe it was in March. Kicked off the cleanup, and that community has stepped up, and they're doing a quarterly cleanup. So if you get a chance, please drive through there. The community has come together, and they're doing a cleanup every quarter. And it looks like a totally different community. And now they want to adopt or either form some type of HOA because they have large potholes in there, and they want to be able to get that filled as well. So I'm really proud of that community and how they've come together and, you know, formed a whole community of themselves and cleaned up the property. Also, Pine Valley Neighborhood, our Baker Street, they're having a Halloween community event on October 31 from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And thank you for spearheading that kickoff for Monroe Estates. Needed somebody to start the love over there. I appreciate it. Mr. Gregory?
Uh, I've just had multiple citizens come and thank me so much for what the city did during the storm, getting power back on really quickly, clearing the roads. Thanks for all the folks you took care of. Thanks for getting into action and making sure that we were up and running. And so I just want to say thanks again to everybody and for all you did. We appreciate you.
You have a second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth on that. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
District 7 is proud to be here, and, uh, we're, we're, we're fine. No news to report.
Except I didn't skip you this time. Mr. Dickinson?
I just want to say, uh, out the SWAT trot that MPD is sponsoring, are you running that, Mr. Mayor?
I don't believe in running.
Well, I signed up to run the 10K. Of course, I'm in AFib, so I don't know if that's going to be possible. But just want to encourage people to come out and support the 5K and the 10K. We've talked about health in here tonight. We've talked about parks. We've talked about the need for recreation. We've talked about, uh, some of the good stuff that's going on, uh, in the districts. And those races, particularly the 10K, winds through several different districts. Part of Ms. Crawford's, uh, certainly mine, Ms. Brown's. Uh, it's a good chance to get out and see the city on foot, which I encourage people to do instead of just driving your cars around, so.
But if we can walk it, I think I'm in.
You, you can walk it, Mr. Mayor.
The 19th? All right.
I'll be there.
Is that, okay. In that case, I'm coming. Um, okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, um, I'm, I'm, be real quick. We have, uh, I'm follow-up on what Tyler said. Our utility teams, the roads and streets and public safety, they just did an outstanding job as we prepared for, uh, a lean. Um, tonight, we have another one that's getting ready to hit, um, the west coast of Florida. So please pray for those folks because my daughter was just evacuated from the east coast of Florida. It's officially, I think, at 8 o'clock in the morning from St. Augustine. So it is, it is covering a large portion of that state, and, and it's going to be, it's category 5 at one point today. So, uh, please keep those folks in your prayers. Now, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
Oh, my, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.